Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you once again for the opportunities that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you so much for the season and we ask that everyone, as they celebrate this season, that they go through it safe and have the happy holidays that is intended for them to have. We also ask that you bless those that do not have. Bless them in a double portion, with a double portion of your Spirit. Bless those still that are in foreign lands, for whatever reason they may be, serving in arms' way. And we also ask that you continue to bless all of us that are close. Let us go through these holidays safe. Now we ask you also to bless this meeting, all those that have come out to share with us, and that we make decisions that are wise and are useful for the people. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) pledge. Let us give thanks to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Phil Paul.
Jeff Young.
Here.
Richard Martin.
Here.
John Davis.
Here.
Lexon Parker.
Brother.
Craig Gill.
Here.
David Shaw.
Here.
Two minutes, and then we'll go to the regular meeting.
Tom Lou.
Sam.
Probably move in second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number two is the industrial certification. I'm gonna put that item off. I'm expecting, uh, must kind of come in a little later, and then we'll point back. Public hearing, adopting an ordinance number 949, zoning change. We're now entering to a public hearing. Anyone here to make any comments on this? Feel free, yes.
Yes, sir.
Sure.
Good evening. My name is David Strange, Principal of New Horizons Development. I've had the opportunity to meet many of you before. I'm here on behalf of the proposed development of Northbrook that we're proposing on the side of property that we're seeking to have rezoned. I just really, real quickly, I have a little slideshow here in just a second, but before I get to that, is that a minute? Can everybody hear me? (Inaudible). I'll tell you a little bit about the development. Can y'all hear me now? I'll tell you a little bit about the development here in two seconds, but just real quickly before we get to that. Again, David Strange of New Horizons Development, and I have Rose Shaw with me here this evening, who is the manager of our Meadowbrook subdivision that will be south of the proposed development. I also want to state for the record that we're here tonight for an application of rezoning, that we submitted our zoning application with the zoning board. After meeting with the zoning board, vetting that issue, it was recommended that the zoning request be approved, and that is how the matter is before this council tonight for a resolution seeking to ratify and adopt an ordinance to that effect. Just as a matter of procedure, for the record, as with any zoning case, it's proper to cite a general objection that in denial of a zoning bought forth by an owner of a property is tantamount to a denial of Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment rights. It's just a general objection for the record, you have to do these type of things. All that being said, here is what I'd like to talk to you about, and that is, we have a, Northbrook Apartments is a 48 townhouse-style apartment complex that we're gonna develop. It has one, two, and three bedrooms. There were the next slide taking, much better. There we go. We have been awarded the funding from the State of Louisiana. We just found out last week for this development, so we have all the financing in place, everything is lined up. The next step in the process will be to go through the planning and permitting stage of development. This is, uh, these are the townhouse-style apartments that we build, everywhere we build these. We've built probably this exact type of development five times in the last three years in different locations. Y'all are obviously all familiar with our Meadowbrook subdivision here. This is just kind of a different variation on the workforce housing development. The way this works is there's kind of a common entrance here, and then it's a townhouse-style where there's separate living quarters, everyone has separate porch and all that kind of stuff. Go to the next. It's a gated commuting with key card access. The only way in and out is to call into a call box and be let in by a resident of the subdivision. Next. Some of the amenities, I'm having a hard time reading all this stuff up there, but they have, uh, there's gonna be a community center, which is a clubhouse. There'll be a swimming pool, there's a washers and dryers in every unit. We have a recreational park, and this particular development, because of the density issues, we're gonna have a tremendous amount of green space related to this development. Go to the next one. That's the computer lab. It's very similar to the one that we currently have at Meadowbrook. This one will be a little larger. This is the, go to the next, the swimming pool that we'll put in place, that's, we use essentially the same design each time. Next. This is the, we have a little community park and pavilion area that we'll construct. Next. Obviously, in addition to the gated entrance, there'll be full perimeter fencing. It will be a completely self-contained development. This is what we've applied, this is Meadowbrook subdivision right here, which is about 28 acres. This is the balance of the land that we currently own that's inside the city limits. This lot over here is an additional 40 acres that we own that lies outside of the city limits. So, we had worked well with the city to bring workforce housing to Windsboro in the last couple of years, and so we would like to continue to work within the city limits and offer our proposed zoning change for that 9.6 acres. The development itself is only about four, four and a half acres that it takes to build the 48 units that we're going to be building, so the rest of it will just be simply converted to green space and a conservation movement. Go ahead to the, so that, I guess, what's important about that slide is we're talking about 9.6 acres is the subject of the rezoning application, that would allow us to go from its existing R1 to an R3. This is just a proposed schematic. When we turn in our application for financing, there are some things that we're married to, some things we're not. As far as the number of units, that's set in stone. The size of those units is set in stone. All the amenities we have is set in stone. What your site plan is kind of conceptual, because obviously, they realize that after the fact, you have to go back to the local municipality, to the state fire marshal, to the Department of Environmental Quality, and all of those entities and institutions have the opportunity to weigh in and formulate what is the final site plan. So, this is just, again, concept. It'll be adjusted a little bit as we go through the permitting process to meet whatever the specific development ordinance or requirements are, specific to Windsboro. Go to the next. It's a green community, we had certified that. When it's all said and done, it's gonna be a certified gold level under the Leeds Home Standard. That's a pretty difficult level to achieve. Go to the next slide. In order to do that, you have to incorporate a bunch of kind of green building concepts. We're putting in tankless water heaters. It's gonna be all energy-starred appliances. The HVAC self-contained has to have a HERS of 76. That rating is very difficult to achieve. Everything has to be completely self-contained. We're using all environmentally complementary components. We're gonna recycle all the construction waste, and it'll be registered as a nationally-recognized green community on fact, and we committed to that in our application, we committed to delivering that. One of the tenets of green building is to use local supplies. You know, it stands to reason that if you're trucking in your supplies from great distances, that's not a green concept. So, it fosters green building to buy local, so you don't have wasted transportation costs and things like that. So, a significant number of the products that are put into the development will come from Windsboro and the retailers here. We've had some discussions with the mayor in the last several months about the local suppliers that we utilized in the Meadowbrook project, and that we will have a lot more opportunity on this project, because there's a little bit of a different financing nuance on it. So, we're gonna be, our bills get paid much more quickly, our draws work more regularly as they should, and we've always talked to some of the local suppliers about their ability to get some of the green building products that we need to really make this kind of a community-based project. Next. It is a rental development. Again, we have 48 units. We've got one, two, and three bedrooms, and rent structures are essentially 250 to 401s, 460 and 525. Next slide. Benefits of the development are, you know, it's gonna be a source of tax revenue for the local community by placing it within the city limits as opposed to out in county. We're gonna create some jobs. We're committed to meeting with local providers, and we're committed to being accountable for that. To come back to during construction of the council meetings and answer any questions about which local suppliers that we're using in the process. And the total development cost is about seven and a half million dollars, so it's a pretty significant contribution to the local economy. I think I've only got two more, there's none losing anybody. What's very important to note about these types of developments, that they're called Section 42 developments, is we enter into a contract for our financing with the IRS and with the Treasury. So, all of these things are not something we have a choice in the matter, we've already committed to this. We're gonna have a 24-hour security present, it's gonna be gated with a key card, as I mentioned. One of the great things that we're gonna do on this development is, we can opt a unit out, and we have selected to do that on this development. And what that means is, we will make one of these units available to a local law enforcement personnel, free of charge, for as long as that property is out there. And the law enforcement person is not income restricted. They can make as much money, you know, as they want to, and they don't have, there's no restriction as it relates to that as there is on some of the other units. So, we're gonna make that available, and I certainly hope that someone in the local police or sheriff's department or something like that avails themselves to that opportunity, because it's a great thing. You know, we are audited by the State of Louisiana and our investment partner, a lot of times that Chase Manhattan Bank, so we're not able to, you know, have any unfilled voids as it relates to our physical fitness of the development, or any of our tenant files or anything like that. If they, on these physical inspections they do a couple times a year, if they come in and literally find a dead battery in a fire detector in just one of those units, we can be disqualified from participating in this program. So, they have a pretty heavy hammer above your head, because it's obviously a huge benefit to be able to participate in this program. Another very, most unique thing, I think, about the development as it relates to multifamily is, when this program came into being in the late 80s, they saw that apartments have a life cycle. And in some cities, we see apartments that enter a level of decline, and that's because they're not regulated as it relates to any operating or replacement reserves. That's not the case here. We have to make an initial deposit of a couple hundred thousand dollars to close it, and that escrow account, so to speak, grows every year as the development is in service, so that we are always prepared to go replace anything that needs replacing, which would include a complete rehab of the property over some period of time, so it doesn't have a declining life cycle because of these mandates on us for all these operating and replacement reserves, and that's audited on a annual basis. I think, you know, lastly on that point, is in this program, after a 10-year period, you can opt to redo the property and completely rehabilitate it after a 10-year period. And just by way of quick example, our budget is roughly $75 a foot hard cost on new construction, it's $65 a foot on one of these rehab things. So, it is a brand-new unit, typically, oftentimes we'll only say the slacks. And that is just seen of being able to recycle the investment that really the federal government has made in these type of developments. So, there are developer partners in these things through the IRS regulations and Chase Manhattan Bank. Next. So, again, the site that we're seeking to rezone is the 9.6 acres that lies within the city limits that we own. And Skipper, I think that we provided you with an updated map of that, that we reran all those ordinances and stuff and confirmed the most recent and where we are on the site. So, we're only talking about the 9.6 acres, and we need that to facilitate the permitting and construction of the development that we just discussed. Now, I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
You talked about buying from local realtors and such. What about local labor?
Yes. Yes, we use local labor and local suppliers.
This is a public hearing. Anyone else have anything that they'd like to press on this subject?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Craig, you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's fine. I have a question for you, David. You just mentioned local labor. What was your experience with local labor on the Meadowbrook project that you guys just completed?
We had two issues here. And to be perfectly honest with you, it was not great. It was not great for two reasons. The first one's a little bit complex, and it's a unique blip in time. And that is, when the financial markets crashed, our industry was affected like a lot of other ones, and so we weren't able to sell tax credits. What the government did is they stepped in and they bought the tax credits. They don't need them, they just did it as part of the stimulus act. But what that did is it made instead of Chase Manhattan our partner, the government our partner. So, to process a construction draw took us anywhere from 60 to 90 days. And many of the local labor persons and suppliers, they couldn't wait 60 to 90 days to get paid on their inventory terms, and they simply just opted out, and we made that option available to them. The other thing was, quite frankly, we didn't do a good enough job of engaging everyone in the community about the opportunities and things that we could do to help them be qualified subcontractors, that we were committed to do a better job this time, and to be held accountable for that.
Did you make it aware to these individuals, David, of the situations that had arisen and would cause them problems? Did you actually sit down and talk with those individuals that wanted to be hired out by your company or Meadowbrook in order to be able to work for you?
No, sir, I did not personally. I'm not the, not to deflect the question, I'm not the contractor. We have a general contractor. He would've done that on our instructions to please do it, but as I had mentioned to the mayor once before, that will not be an option this go around. I wouldn't inject myself into that process, because some kind of hell, that message did not get conveyed clearly enough to our general contractor, that we want local suppliers and local labors involved.
Will these same contractors, or folks that you have or had, from what I understand, they will build us from all over the country, some from Texas, some from Mississippi, some from Memphis and other places. Will they still be in charge of a certain group of houses as such, and doing certain section of those houses? And they'll be working with this local label? Or will our local label people, if you hire them, will they be the ones in charge of certain groups of houses? Or can you guarantee them a certain group of houses?
No, and it's not by house or by block, it's by job. So, any subcontractor that works for us will be getting the full job.
The full job?
The full job.
Will that be some, then those individuals that had the jobs for Meadowbrook, are they going to be bidding on these jobs, or on this particular job as well? Will they be having an opportunity to bid those contractors that'll be subcontracted and so forth and so on? Will they be allowed to bid?
Yes, sir, sir.
As competition to our local people?
No, they will be allowed to bid on the job.
Okay.
We will encourage, well, I mean, encourage them. Any, let's just make a trade-up. Let's say that it's a paint contractor, okay? And let's say that that paint contractor has to hire 20 people to come paint a project this large. Then we will insist as part of awarding that award to a paint contractor, if they're not from Windsboro, that they seek to sub a portion of that under their umbrella to qualified painters in Windsboro, just by way of example. And the same for all the major charities.
Wouldn't that then cause for them to personally get a risk contract or insurance on their own? Or will they be working under that contract as they're being paid?
They would be working under ours, or the, and that's another thing that we could've done, that our contractor could've done, and he didn't. He could've put some of these people under his risk policies. And that's something that we need to rectify. But as you know, I mean, there are gonna be a few things that, you know, there's not a local plumbing contractor that can come in in that short period of time and plumb an entire development of that site. So, we'll have to just agree to all of it together.
David, I, you know, I mean, the concept is a good concept. The intention is good, but it didn't turn out the way we had talked about it the last time. And I feel like you let us down. And how can we rectify that now? By giving you another shot at this thing, by doing the same thing, and then once you leave this room, it's out of, it's out of your hands, because you have people to answer to. And we understand that. Then, in that case, the things that you're saying to us may or may not materialize, and if they don't, then we're stuffed with a bunch of brick houses that stacked on top of each other. And that means that if you say 10 years, it could possibly look at a deterioration within five years, if these people are not adequately served and if they don't pay their bills. We want housing in this area, but we want them adequately serviced, and we want them to be stable, and also for the financial stability of the individuals that's going in it to be stable. And you can't guarantee that.
I can't, and we can't guarantee that. We're committed to these developments, we have a very broad portfolio. I'd like to also say that, you know, tonight we're here for a rezoning application.
I was saying?
To seek to have approved our zoning application as it was properly. But to answer your questions, we can't. Because of the operating and replacement reserves and all of our partners that are in these developments, we don't have the ability to let our properties go into decline. They're not conventional apartment developments. The federal government's involved, the Chase Manhattan Banks of the world are involved. It's a different type of development, and so that's not an option. And Ms. Shaw is here tonight, and I think that she manages Meadowbrook subdivision for us. She can speak to our commitment as an organization to our tenants, her personal commitment to the tenant base there, to see that they're all living in a great community where they have an opportunity to raise a family and better themselves. Really, the baseline proposition of these developments, not to get too much off on the tangent, is affordable workforce housing, and that is because an alarming number of people are what they call mortgage and rent burden, meaning 30% of their take-home income goes to pay either their mortgage or their rent. This program is to allow people an affordable housing option, so they have more disposable income, so every dollar they make doesn't go into paying mortgage or rent. But, you know, as Ms. Shaw can attest, that, you know, everyone that lives in our development are good, hard-working families and good citizens of the town of Windsboro, and we are committed to making that opportunity available to another 48 families.
And on another note, if I may say so, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Rose Shaw, and I am a resident of Louisiana, or Windsboro. You would be surprised at the phone calls that I get. On a daily basis, how the word got out about the new development, I don't know. We have not advertised this at all. But I get calls every day about the one-bedroom and the two-bedroom apartments that we have coming. I got a call this morning from a young mother. I won't give out names because of privacy laws. He's bringing in $674 a month, so he's staying with family now. So, in order for him to be able to live on his own and be independent, he's really looking forward to this two-bedroom housing that we're trying to develop. Even over at Meadowbrook, I'm on call 24/7. You can call me anytime in the day or night, if there's a problem here. I make sure that the tenants are well taken care of, all of the appliances are working. If they have any issues whatsoever, I'm here to take care of it. One Sunday night around 7:00 PM, I received a phone call. The family that just came there from out of town, the water was cut off. So, I said, "Well, you just moved in a couple of weeks ago, how can the water be cut off?" So, I got on the phone, I called the fire department, I got the superintendent, explained the situation. I said, "If you would allow us to go out and cut this piece of water back on, I will handle this first thing Monday morning." Well, what happened was, there was an error in the accounting department. They had an account that was closed, and actually was an active, it should've been an active account. So, I'm always on call for whatever reason, Ms. Mettler. And again, you would be surprised at the calls that I get regarding these apartments.
Thank you, Rose. And I just, one thought that I forgot to mention this, that she had presented with me before the meeting, that again, we just found out about this a couple of days ago from the state, and through no word of our own, word has gotten out, and Rose already has 22 people in the waiting list for the new development, and that's just in three days. Yes, sir?
During the planning stage, if this area is rezoned, a concern of mine is, as I understand, the plan was for that Martin Luther King to be the only access in and out of the new development. And that, to me, causes a concern, for instance, for emergency purposes. During, while you're planning, is this something that you, your firm can address and can also bring back to this council your plans and ideas, if you choose to put another drive in there for that purpose? Will we be involved? That's my...
Absolutely, we can allow for that. And that was only a conceptual render. You know, we're subject to whatever, and I don't know what they are, I haven't read them, again, recently, for this particular municipality, and Skipper may know, but when you aggregate the use of that street, you're gonna run into a finite number of homes that are being serviced, and that may automatically kick you into having one or more points of ingress and egress. The state fire marshal obviously weighs in on that. So, once we start kind of the planning stage, our architects and engineers will get together with Skipper, they'll get together with the fire marshal, and they'll work on these plans, and knowing on the front end that one of the things that even if the ordinances did not require a second means, which I can't imagine that they would not, but let's just say hypothetically they didn't, and that's something that the council would like to see instituted and, and of course, we can bring that through our, the planning process and work on that with Skipper, and bring that back to the council to demonstrate that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Okay. Public hearing is now, and we'll head it back to the public meeting. Is there anyone else? Okay. Public hearing is now, and we'll head it back to the public meeting. At this stage, we would, I would ask if there was any action that we would like to take on the public hearing.
I have a question for Skipper, if I might. Can you, can you, or will you go over for us the recommendation of the zoning commission? And the reason I'm asking that is because I'm seeing a very broad, or a very large area that the zoning commission, if I understand it properly, has recommended to rezone, whereas, from what I've heard tonight and what I've seen, a much smaller area is being, will be developed. So, is there a possibility for just that area, or does the whole area that was recommended, as I read it, by the zoning commission, have to be voted upon tonight or tomorrow?
Okay. The one flare that needs to be done on these, I'm sure all y'all got your little set of prints here in front of you. The zoning map that they were presenting at the council, the zoning...
The zoning map that they were presenting at the council, the zoning council was, it showed the boundary lines for the city limits being like three hundred and twenty-five feet off Highway number sixty-five with the Ross and Road. After research finding our exact property on, for the city limits, what is drawn on this map is gonna pretty much be what our city limits is. So, as in the indication of the draw, the drawings that they've showed us on the slides of the Meadowbrook subdivision go down.